Information that you think is basic information. You know what that's like. You've been through that a time or two, I think, so.
Just because they don't promote them.
Anyway.
That's what I thought was a good idea. Me and my friend, my friend's like, I really need money and I need money. And I'm like, we should try to make a loan from my idea if it doesn't work. They'll come to us, you know. I'm there. That's what I'm.
Hit the corner button.
I blew into it. I think I heard it.
It should come on, you know, on the, on the monitor. Oh, it's locked.
I think we need to get some more water.
Turn it back on. Couple of years ago, we sat down and you had something on your tablet. And I was like, huh. So I got a tablet. Now I carry my tablet now everywhere. It's starting to trend.
I can't do it.
You've got a huge tablet.
I can't do without it now. It's like, I don't like to read on my phone, so.
Okay, I think we're ready to start. Good evening. I'm Dogna Simmons, President of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City. I will be serving as a moderator this evening for the Sioux City Community School District Board of Directors Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose membership is open to citizens over the age of 16, male or female. We do not endorse candidates or political parties. We do, however, work to educate ourselves and the public on issues affecting our citizens and our government. That is why we're committed to hosting candidate forums like this one this evening. Please reference our League of Women Voters of Sioux City Facebook site to learn about our varied programs and especially our celebrations during 2020, celebrating the 100th anniversary of, on February 14th, of the founding of the League of Women Voters by Carrie Chapman-Cat, as well as celebrating in August, the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, granting women the right to vote. This forum has been co-hosted since the year 2000 by the League of Women Voters of Sioux City and the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission. The Mayor's Youth Commission, representing Sioux City's public and private high schools, consists of 133 members. The member students are committed to community service and in 2018 gave over 3,692 hours in volunteer service. The Mayor's Youth Commission also mentors young ambassadors from area middle schools and they are helping with us tonight. The Mayor Youth Commission members have worked to develop questions for their panel representative to pose this evening. The League of Women Voters of Sioux City is proud to continue our work with the Mayor's Youth Commission and to involve them in this and our other forums and events. We, last year and this year, have often offered the Executive Council members a free League of Women Votership membership. We would like to thank the mayor and the city support staff, especially city clerk Lisa McCardle, for her assistance in making the excellent arrangements for tonight's forum. The creation of the Mayor's Youth Commission by the city many years ago and its continuation is to be applauded. We also wish to thank Brittany Book and Mary Costa of Sulan Cares and members of that organization and other adult volunteers for their guidance and mentorship of the members of the Mayor's Youth Commission. We are most appreciative that Sparkly, formerly Cable One, is televising this event live with Connor Foster, city staffer, doing our filming. The city is also livestreaming via YouTube on their website. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters of Sioux City's planning members, committee members, for their assistance and coordinating tonight's forum. We appreciate having members of the Mayor's Youth Commission volunteering to serve as our panelists, timers, and greeters tonight. Timers tonight are Estella Rued Johnson, who's an East High School sophomore, Jackson Wagner, who's a North High School freshman, and Young Ambassador Maria McGowan, who goes to Holy Cross Blessed Sacrament and is an eighth grader. Assisting as timers and training are members of the Youth Ambassadors from Area Middle School and Mayor's Youth Commission, and Young Ambassadors are also helping as greeters tonight. And I would like that all of the Mayor's Youth Commission members and the Young Ambassadors would please stand so that we can acknowledge your volunteer efforts. Thank you. And serving as our guest panelists this evening are Aman Ali, who's the mayor of the Mayor's Youth Commission and goes, is a senior at Healan High School, Teresa Weaver Basie, who's a League of Women Voters member, and Woody Gottberg of the Greater Sioux City Press Club. And they're sitting over there. And on behalf of the citizens of Sioux City, I want to thank our candidates for their willingness to run for public office. Our six candidates at this time, starting on the left, and we have them sitting alphabetical order for the last name, is Jolene Albert on that end, Sean Broihill, Taylor Goodwin, Dan Greenwell, Miyuki Nelson, and Monique Scarlett. The four people will be elected on Tuesday, November 5th, to serve on the Sioux City Community School Board Directors for the next four years. Now I want to outline the format for this evening. In a few minutes, I'll pose an initial question to each of the candidates relative to their qualifications. The panelists will then pose their questions. Each panelist will pose a question to just one candidate, and after the candidate answers, I will call upon the next panelist to pose a question to the next candidate. The candidates will have a 60-second maximum response time allotted. The Mayor's Youth Commission timers will show a sign to the candidates when 30 seconds remain and when their time has expired. And can you hold up the signs now so the candidates can see them? Okay. Is, can everybody see the signs? Okay. I will then announce when the 60 seconds are up and proceed to the next panelist and candidate. During the last 10 minutes of the first part of this session, candidates will be given an opportunity to respond to any question previously posed to another candidate. At approximately 7:50, we will take a short break. Audience members are encouraged to write questions on the note cards provided, and during the break, our Mayor's Youth Commission members and Young Ambassadors, plus the volunteers from the League of Women Voters Committee, will collect questions posed by the audience. We will convene our forum after the break and pose as many of the questions submitted by the audience as possible. This final portion of the forum will last approximately 30 minutes. I will then ask one question to a candidate and then to another to the next candidate until we have processed as many of the questions as possible. If time allows, the candidates may respond to any question previously posed to a fellow candidate, or they may be asked to pose a question to their fellow candidates. At the conclusion of the audience question segment, each candidate will be allowed a 90-second summation. And I would like the audience, candidates, and panelists that we have the opportunity to model respect for self and others and listening skills tonight, much as we ask our students to do the same on a daily basis. Please turn off your cell phones and pagers and be courteous and attentive. I will now pose our introductory questions and ask that each candidate respond with a 60-second allotted time. And also be sure that you, your mic, that you're close enough to the mic so that your response will be picked up both in the hall here and also on our cable and YouTube broadcasts. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Albert. Please state your qualifications for serving on the Sioux City Community School District Board of Directors.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jolene Albert. I have 27 years of experience in education, serving as both a teacher and an administrator. In that role, I oversee currently all of academics and student services at Western Iowa Tech Community College. My experience in the last seven years of being Vice President, during that time, we have increased retention at the college by 23%, increased graduation by 19%. We've increased diversity from 15 to 45% by creating a welcoming environment. And we are the top degree institution, granting institution, in the state now for four years in a row. I believe that those skills and the creativity that I've brought to my job at Western Iowa Tech, I will bring to the school board to serve the students of the Sioux City District. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill?
Thank you. My name's Sean Broihill. I'm a sixth-generation Siouxlander here, product of the Sioux City School Districts, starting out at Emerson, going on to West Middle and West High School. Graduated in 1997. Continued on to my bachelor's here at Briar Cliff, and then Iowa State for my masters, and then pursued my doctorate degrees with Regent University, and now pursuing another doctorate. Have a doctorate, pursued that in educational psychology. I've been very focused on education, particularly over the last 20 years. I've given back quite a bit to my community. Personally, provided over $100,000 worth of funding, products, services, including a computer lab for the Boys and Girls Club here in Sioux City. computer lab for the Boys and Girls Club here in Sioux City. Volunteered over 10,000 hours worth of work in the last 20 years, just helping promote education and opportunities for children. I had that same opportunity presented to me when I was a young kid at the Boys Club. And my goal is, somebody made that effort to me, so I want to make that effort to our children. So that's why I think I'd be a good candidate for school board.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman?
Hello, everyone, and it's so great to see this room full. So, I am born and raised Sioux City, product of our Sioux City Community School District, and graduate of Sioux City East in 2010. Went to Wayne State, got my undergrad, then I went to Creighton Law, and realized that the last thing this town needs is me being a lawyer. So I went to Villanova to pursue my master's. Really, why I'm here tonight and why I think I should be here tonight is I grew up in a household of a Sioux City teacher. Many of my friends throughout my life are now teachers within the Sioux City School District. I think I owe something back to my community. And I worked in Washington DC for two years. Aside from that, I've been in Sioux City my whole life. I really want to give back. My professional background and my academic background bode well for me being here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell?
Good evening. My name is Dan Greenwell, and as part of my qualifications, I have four children. Daughter graduated in 2015, she's currently in veterinary school, and three sons attending high school right now, a senior and twin juniors at North High. I have a passionate interest in public education. Some of you may know, I've been actively involved in attending school board meetings and speaking up on issues and doing a lot of fundamental work on the district because I believe we can improve our district, and I want to be part of that. My professional skills and experience, I was a CPA, CFO, and a CEO. I understand how complex organizations work. I worked my way through college driving a cement mixer. So I come from a very poor family and a humble background. The things that I really want to accomplish as a board member is to get a culture of openness and transparency. And you're going to hear that quite a bit, openness and transparency. That's really what I support and what I want to do.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Good evening. My name is Miyuki Nelson. My friends call me Miki. And I am currently serving on the school board, and I have two wonderful kids attending our district. I also happen to be a volunteer. I work diligently with the United Way, as well as the Sioux City Public School Foundation. And I am currently serving on the board for one reason. I want to make sure I make a difference, and I make a difference through our kids and improving our community through their achievements. My top issues are fiscal responsibility, innovation in learning, and equity. And I plan to do that by providing direct and concise instruction and being able to provide specific and smart goals for our superintendent, and to create a lot of discussion at the board, which I already have done this past year, and continue to work through a budget that has short and long-term goals that are consistent with the district's goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett?
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Monique Scarlett Vote-Mo. I am a wife, a parent, an active community leader. Graduated West High School. I have obtained higher learning at the University of South Dakota and also Briar Cliff College. I have years of experience serving on the district boards and committees for our school district, the School Improvement Advisory Committee, as well as the Equity Committee, and the R's Parent Group for several years, almost 30 years, to be exact. The group has exposed the district's strategies and goals. Being engaged for years in the district has given me the vast knowledge and feedback from students, teachers, and parents. Along with my 20-plus years of banking, gives me the fiscal education that is needed. I am passionate about our district, and I want it to be the best that it can be. I am the candidate of choice that will bring collaboration, which will enhance student success, educator empowerment, and the community connection. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to our panelists section. We'll start with Mr. Ali, who will ask the first question of Mr. Broyhill.
Okay, so the very first question is, do you support standardized testing, and do you think it should affect students' futures as much as it does? Why or why not?
I think one of the biggest problems we're having right now is we're teaching students how to pass a test instead of teaching students how to be successful. That's a problem that's plaguing us nationwide. I think we need to start getting away from that and really start letting teachers do what they do best, and that's teach our students to be successful. Far too often, our administrators are going to our teachers and saying, hey, we have these certain metrics, your students have to get to this certain level of this standardized test, or they have to have this certain thing. We need to stop that. We need to start working with our teachers so they can do exactly what they need to do. So I absolutely support relooking at standardized testing and start going to more common sense matter to get our students to be successful. Far too often, we're seeing students that aren't able to go into the workforce, be successful at college, and it's beginning to become almost a catastrophe. So we definitely need to find a way to get those teachers back into the driver's seat and really drive the education for our students. We have a lot of great teachers in our district, and we really need to help them out here.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your question would be for Mr. Goodman.
Mr. Goodman, citizens are told that staffing costs drive the district's budget and tax needs. How do you plan to address taxation and staffing?
Sure. Unlike, I mean, not unlike any public budget, the vast majority of it is operating costs, salaries, benefits. We are facing a different challenge as SSA and really allowable growth is all kind of paired into what we, as a school district, can do. That means we have to be very, very creative about where we want to spend money and where we want to transfer money from, move, all of that. I want to make sure that we are giving our in-classroom teachers what they need to make our school district as absolutely competitive as it can be. We would, as a board, we would address every single salary. Let's see what it's doing to make our district competitive. Let's see where we can be creative and move it to ultimately get that goal of being competitive.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your question will be for Mr. Greenwell.
Thank you. Dan, I know one of the things you're campaigning on is more transparency in the school district. I know that you sometimes have battled to get information and have even paid out of your own pocket to get things that you have requested. What can the district do to improve transparency? What would you like to see change?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, both on the, I'll talk financial and then operational side. On the financial side, I think the budgeting process that we have is a weak process. When you go through and see what the city and county does for their budgeting process and the amount of support and detail they have, it's much more robust than we have at school. David Gleiser, who's a current board member, he actually says that, so he's pretty open about that. We need to improve it significantly. There's been discussion that they're going to raise the level of detail. In other words, not provide as much detail in this upcoming budgeting session, and I think that's absolutely wrong. So I think that that is something that I would definitely put down. On the operational side, I think the secret class sizes, I call them, because it's very hard to get information on class sizes, I think that's something that we need to make available to the public. I've even suggested in open public board meetings, we post it on the web so that we can see as a community what our class sizes are. And to go to your point, I've spent my own resources, yes, that's correct. I've spent $8,432.81 over the last two years and 10 months requesting information from the district.
Thank you. Mr. Ali, your question would be for Ms. Nelson.
Okay, so my question is, what are your views or comments regarding the idea of having a morality/religion class offered in Sioux City Community Schools or any school district that teaches basically about manners and the morality and religion, such as religion of Christianity or other religions, that basically explain the idea of what is right and wrong and certain issues? And also the idea on manners, like, do you think that this should be an offered class?
Okay, so this is a multi-step question, so I'll try to take that into pieces. So, we talked to our students about something called PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention System. And basically, it's how to be a good citizen within your own school. How to behave, how to moderate your tone of voice, whether you're inside or outside. As far as the religion component, we are a public school system, and our course offerings are provided through guidance through the Department of Education. And there are restraints being a public entity. As well as, as far as going into learning more about different beliefs and such, things like that, that's more like a humanities class that you're suggesting. So, I'm not aware that we have such an offering at this point. However, again, we do talk about how it is that we expect, what our expectations are for students, and we allow them to have room to learn, as well as reward them for good behavior.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your question would be for Ms. Scarlett.
Ms. Scarlett, do you think class sizes are an issue in the district? If so, what can you do as a board member to affect class size?
Thank you. I do believe that class sizes are a major concern in our district, and I would go with what I've been saying all along. We need to go back to a mentality of adopting to adapt. We need to get our teachers some help in those classrooms that are oversized so that we do not shortchange our students. Because at the end of the day, if our classrooms are overloaded, our teachers become overworked, and therefore something lacks. Somebody doesn't get the quality education. So that is a concern. And again, my plan would be adopt to adapt, getting more quality teachers in our public school system that can have a mentorship from the teachers that are tenured and be able to assist so that we have successful students.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your question would be for Ms. Albert.
Thanks. In your role at Western Iowa Tech, I know you have some connection with some of the district's students, with college now. We have a great asset in the Career Academy as far as prepping students for future careers. Do you see anything else that can be done as far as programs or partnerships to help high school students and even middle school students as far as preparing for higher education once they graduate?
Oh, I certainly do, yes. And I think that that might be one of the bits of wisdom that I could actually bring to the district. I see firsthand what is lacking in students from all districts when they come to college. And really, it's, you know, I'm always surprised because students graduate from high school and they're 18, and that's May or June, and then they come to college and that's August. And I think society expects that all of a sudden, they've become an adult in those two months that they are probably sleeping in during the summer. So I think that there's things that could be done during that time period to help better prepare those students for college. But I'm not talking just about academics. I'm talking really about emotionally prepared to come to college, to be separated from their parents, to be self-supporting, and to be really good citizens, and be able to work together with other students and in classrooms. So yes, I think that there's a lot that can be done between four-year institutions and the districts.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your next question would be for Mr. Broyhill.
Mr. Broyhill, if an educator called you about a problem in the district, what would you do?
Well, as a school board member, that's a really open question. I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure that educator can perform their primary function, and that's to make sure that our students are successful. So it really depends on what they're asking for. If they're asking me for a million dollars, I obviously can't just give them a million dollars, but it really depends upon their request. I think it's very important that educators are heard from and are able to come to the board with their questions and with their problems. And, I mean, really, they're our first resource. They're the point of contact with students. So we need to make sure that they're fully capable and prepared to provide our students with the best education possible. So I'm going to do anything in my power to make sure that that teacher can accomplish that particular task, whether it be to bring that up as an agenda item at a board meeting, whatever it takes.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your next question would be for Mr. Goodman.
Well, the board dealt somewhat with this issue last night, I was happy to see, as far as regarding our high school teams and being forced to play Des Moines teams. We've had some horrible football scores this year. Our metro high schools have been broken into two districts. Travel expenses are high to go to places like Des Moines and Ankeny. What would you do to fight to bring parity? And I know you'd have to do this battle with the state level, with the High School Athletic Association. What can we do as a district, though, to level the playing field with our metro teams when you have to go against, say, the Des Moines Dowlings and the Valleys and schools like that?
So, it wasn't very long ago when I was playing against Valley and Dowling in Urbendale at East. It's something that's been talked about for a long time, whether it is creating a 5A and having all of the metro teams, some burb teams out there, create the 5A. We've even kind of flirted with the idea of combining all three public high schools in Sioux City. And I am aware of the action last night, wanted IHSSA in Boone to kind of bring in more factors aside from just enrollment. The district of Sioux City, on both the athletic field and the classroom, we experienced challenges that those Des Moines schools don't face. We certainly have to do something, but it might be an issue beyond the schools. It might be a socioeconomic issue. And I know a lot of kids that I played with couldn't go to practice because they had to work. So I don't know if that's necessarily an issue that can be fixed up here.
Thank you. Mr. Ali, your next question would be for Mr. Greenwell.
We're having a little trouble hearing people, so speak a little closer into the microphone.
So this question is about mental health. And so, how do you think today's school environment is affecting students' mental health? And what can be done to make positive changes regarding mental health?
Mental health is a topic that has emerged much more prevalent now. I can speak to it directly because I have a nephew who's been diagnosed as a schenofratic. So I know it firsthand, and I know what treatment is needed for that, and it's a very difficult journey. It's something that we're going to have to start paying more and more attention to and providing the mental health services in the district because that's almost the front line, front line of where we see these kids at a very young age. It's going to cost more money, we know that. We've got to figure out how to become efficient in other areas to do that, but mental health is something that's very near to me. I understand it, and I understand the trauma that it creates in families, but it's something we definitely have to address, and it's not going away. It's not going to go away. It's only going to get more pronounced, is my feeling, in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your question is for Ms. Nelson.
Ms. Nelson, how should educators be held accountable in the school district?
Interesting question. So, I think one of the things that we have to do before we hold anybody accountable is to hold legislators accountable. Over the past 10 years, public schools have been underfunded and starved, which has created larger classroom sizes. It has also created a perception that the profession does not get paid enough. So then now, on the other side of that, it's creating a teacher shortage. So I think from holding accountable, I think we need to make sure that we hold the right people accountable, and starting with the actual legislators, which actually set the funding for the schools. Our teachers are burdened with a lot that they have to do in their classroom and a lot that they have to do for our kids. So to start with the accountability, I think you need to start at the top where the people are making the larger decisions. are making the larger deficient decisions that impact all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your question will be for Ms. Scarlett.
Well, first, this somewhat relates to the fact you've been involved in Unity and the community, and I appreciate the work you've done with our local law enforcement, with that organization. And knowing that you've had, had children of your own in the district, do you feel that our schools are safe for students? Is there anything you'd like to see change from, from that standpoint or not? Or how do you view the security in our public schools?
Oh, thank you for asking the question, Woody. And as you said, Unity in the Community is an organization that came together to bridge the gap between law enforcement and citizens. In an overall perspective, our schools are very safe in Sioux City. Ongoing training is going to be the key. The school district did allow me last year to go in there and have some conversations with our high school students. And by having those conversations, we identified some things that were happening, and were able to put out those fires before they really got out of control. And so those are kind of preventative measures that we want to see continue in our public school districts. So Unity in the Community bringing it in, and the school district, I think, was an A+. And so I just want to thank the district for that opportunity, and the students that were courageous enough to have those conversations. Thank you.
Mr. Ali, your question will be for Ms. Albert.
So this is a question about technology usage among students. So what is your stance, given your generalization experience in contrast to today's youth, as to technology accessibility in schools? Please also explain how you think teachers and staff should or should not discipline students for the use of technology?
And I didn't hear the first part of your question, I'm sorry.
Like, what is your stance on the use of technology in schools?
Okay. What's my stance on the use of technology in classrooms? Well, I'm very much in favor of use of technology in classrooms. I'm hoping that that moves beyond the use of PowerPoint by the faculty member, the teacher in the classroom. I believe you all have access to your own laptop computers in the district. And I think that that's, it's very important that students are learning how to use all programs and computers. And I understand that you have an elementary school that students are learning to code as early as kindergarten, which is fascinating to me. Some of those students have actually visited Western Iowa Tech and participated in some coding events at, at our college, so I think that that's great. The second part of the question, did that relate to cell phones in the classroom? Okay. So I have to admit, I don't know what the district's policy on that is. I do, I do believe that, you know, as long as the phone is not bothering other people, I suppose that there are occasions where that could be used. I don't know the answer to that, how the district feels about that, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your next question will be for Mr. Broihill.
All right. Thank you for that. Residents, of course, aren't happy about the 8% property tax valuation increase. The district's one of the three taxing bodies for us. Do you, do you see ways, if you're elected, to try to help hold the line on the school district share of property taxes, whether it's cuts or what have you, as far as any ideas on, on holding the line on, on taxes in the school budget if you're elected?
Absolutely. I'm a taxpayer myself. I have my own property tax that I have to pay for, and I was one of those that also had my property tax increased. I am a strong believer in fiscal transparency and accountability. I think that we need to open up the books and look at every single transaction to make sure that every dollar we spend is towards our prime mission, which is to make sure that students are successful, that they're able to migrate to the real world, whether it be to go to college, to go towards a career, to go towards whatever their pursuit of happiness is once they graduate. So we need to look at every single line item down to the utmost detail to make sure that A, the public knows every single cent we're spending is, is for those prime purposes, and B, any cent that we don't need to spend is returned back to the taxpayers. It's very important that we adhere to our prime mission, which is, again, make sure these students are getting exactly what they need to be successful as, as parents. So I'm very strongly in support of any sort of fiscal transparency to make sure that that takes place.
Thank you. Mr. Ali, your question will be for Mr. Goodwin.
This is a question about school security. And this is, how will you change the school security in order to provide a safer environment for not only school shooter threats, but also racial, religious, or sexual orientation security?
Yeah, so unfortunately, we live in a world where that question needs to be asked. And in a setting like this, it needs to be answered. In that case, I think we need to bring professionals from outside the school into our school, whether that be law enforcement, whether that be social workers. I think we need to be able to say that as a school district, we should go outside of our district to get these assets. No, absolutely no student, staff member should feel nervous about coming to, to school to work. I mean, whatever we accomplish up here, it will all be for naught if a kid doesn't feel safe. Let's work with our Sioux City public, our Sioux City Police Department. And I know that our, that we've already been actually doing that. Let's find more innovative ways. It's something that communities across the country are, are figuring out ways to do it. Let's be proactive instead of reactive.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your question will be for Mr. Greenwell.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell, what are your thoughts on school funding in Iowa? On a basic level, does it need to be increased, decreased, or is it adequate? And beyond that, what can school board members do about it?
Well, I think clearly, the state has budget issues everywhere, although we had a surplus last year. But in a down farm economy, I doubt if you'll see that this coming year. School funding is too low. When you look at the money coming from the state, it's definitely too low. We've got competing, competing topics against that. The roads that got washed out, there's going to be a lot of money needed for that. But clearly, school funding. And I think the school funding formula is what I would really focus on, is, is changing the school funding formula. Same discussion that we just had on the athletic side of things. Let's look at our school funding formula, and how do we adjust it for our demographics and our size versus Ankeny? We get the same amount of money from the state. Is that, is that really equitable for our district? And the answer is no. I don't believe it is. I think, again, as I've said and have spoken for years on, looking how we spend our money is equally as important. Getting tax dollars, but yet, how we spend our money is critical. And I think we can make a lot of improvements to save, to save money in that area as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gottberg, your next question will be for Ms. Nelson.
All right. Thank you. Several, several people have actually wanted me to ask this, so I don't know if they've actually brought this concern to the board or not. But it has to do with, with activities after hours at the schools. And recently, for instance, the East High Senior Prom, students were sweating through their formal wear because it was so hot in there. There were only supposedly two fans going. I've had athletes on, on teams or their parents complain to me saying that when they go in early in the morning in winter sports season, that the gyms are cold on the weekends, and that there's no heat on. So I guess the question I would ask, if we have after-hours activity, like proms at night, or practices, and things like Hayworth Hoops on the weekend, why can't we have the heat on in the wintertime on the weekend, and the air conditioning on, and the, when it's still 85 degrees outside, when you have things like proms after school? So is, is there a way that we can better manage heat and air conditioning for activities in off-hours at our buildings? Because I don't know if you get the complaints, but I've had a lot of complaints because of what I do for a living by people, not just from East, but from other schools, too.
Hey, Woody, I have kids that play sports. I know what you're talking about. But let's talk about the high schools. The house, the high schools are older in infrastructure. They, they need to be remodeled. So from that standpoint, yeah, we do have opportunities where we can improve the energy efficiency of our buildings. But at the same time, if you look at the upside of that, which is our newer buildings, where we have implemented every available technology, where we actually recently received an award for a green school from the federal government. I think you have to take those things into perspective. Some of our, our high schools are, are due for a remodel. And unfortunately, we won't be actually hitting those right away, because we need to make sure that we are replacing Hunt, for example, and adding air conditioning to Riverside that doesn't have it right now, and we reduce that number of, of schools. So yes, that is an opportunity for improvement in some locations. But again, we do also provide a lot of opportunity for our community to use our buildings at a free cost, depending on how it's going to actually relate back to our, our schools and our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Alahi, your next question will be for Ms. Scarlett.
Question is, how could classes be better designed to address future and, future jobs and life planning?
How could classes be better designed to?
Like, address future job and life planning?
Okay. Thank you for the question. I think that falls under another idea that I'm bringing back, is the classroom to career, which kind of falls in hand-in-hand with our Career Academy. We need to make sure that our students are prepared for the real world. If they're not going to go to college and, and go that way, then we need to have a trade, some type of vocational learning, preparing them for when they graduate, what is the next step beyond that? And so with that, is making sure that we have them taking the right courses, making sure that the student is completely involved, parents are involved, counselors are involved, so that we have a solid game plan, and that student will fall under the mission statement of succeeding at their highest potential.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver-Basey, your next question will be for Ms. Albert.
Thank you. Mrs. Albert, what are your concerns about state mandated changes to collective bargaining? Would you support having a board member attend bargaining sessions with the various units?
Yes, I would support having a board member attend the bargaining with various units. In fact, in my role at Western Iowa Tech, I have done that in the past. I do have concerns about the changes in that I think we have to work very tirelessly to be sure that our teachers know that we value them, continue to value them, in the light of the changes that have made to, been made to collective bargaining. We have to let our teachers know that just because the state has said we can make significant changes, doesn't mean that we will make significant changes. We need to continue to value in terms of salary and benefit packages.
Thank you. We will now give each candidate an opportunity to answer any question that was presented to one of the other candidates that they wish to answer. They'll have 60 seconds to do this, so we'll start with Mr. Goodwin. Any, any one of the questions, if you'd like to respond to one?
Yeah, and I will take a shot at the, at how kind of state funding has been lacking. When I first started really studying budgets at my, at my last job, the Taxpayers Research Council, I thought the, I thought the allowable spending was outrageous. I, I, I still don't get it. I don't see why it works. I don't see how it works. And quite frankly, I'm seeing that it actually does not work. On state supplemental aid, the last 10 years on average, has been falling behind just simple inflation costs. We can't at, at the school district fund what we need to fund without making cuts or without moving money, which when we, when we are working with a $200 million budget, that's going to happen. But it's also a two-piece puzzle. We need that state aid. We need the state help. As a school board member, I would be an advocate for, for, for increasing on state aid and getting a little help from Des Moines, so.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell?
Well, I'd like to address the, the question that was posed, Ms. Nelson, regarding educators being more accountable. I, I think it's easy, it's easy in my mind to blame the legislature. They're sort of a group that nobody likes. We can blame them and say, that's our problem. Yes, that's part of the problem. The other, the other issue that I've often seen is, let's take, let's take a look closer to home. What can we do closer to home? I'm talking about training for teachers. One of the major things that I've been frustrated with over the last several years is, we implement new programs, but we don't provide training for the teachers. Let me give you a specific example, International Baccalaureate Program. We didn't provide training for the teachers. They could do it voluntarily on their own time during the summer. Approximately 20% of the teachers went for training, 80% didn't. 80% didn't. We implement that program without giving the teachers an opportunity to be trained on it. How do you think that's going to work? Not very well, quite frankly, it's not. It's like buying a new plasma cutting torch and providing no training to the guys that are responsible for operating it. And that's one of the things I think we need to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Well, I was hoping to speak on school funding, since that's one of my strengths. I've been advocating way before I was on the board doing that, but I'd like to rebuttal on the fact that I know for a fact, and it actually was reported in the news, and Dr. Berianek was actually interviewed, our teachers did receive a, a training in-house in our, in our buildings for international baccalaureate, once they actually all returned back to, to, to paid work. So that, that training is happening. It is something that is not district-driven. It is part of the actual candidacy program that we have to provide this. So it's not like we are shorting the teachers and then expecting them to do a, a program that they just have to figure out on the fly. That is, this is part of the candidacy program, to actually provide the instruction for how to implement IB. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett?
Yes, I wanted to go back on the question that was asked to Mr. Goodwin about school security. Although we have things that have been very successful, let's not forget that bullying is still almost at the top three concerns in a lot of the discussions that I've had with parents, that children still don't feel safe in our schools because of teasing, for whatever reasons, rather, they're too fat, or their color, or their gender. Those are things that we still have to deal with at a school board. And I think that brings in more of parental involvement and school board involvement along with the teachers. I know the teachers try their best to get that under control, but all the time, that doesn't happen, and that student still leaves. And we have students in our district that are afraid to go to school. That is a concern, and that is something that I am going to be looking more into.
Thank you. Ms. Albert?
I'd like to address the issue of standardized testing. You know, I think that we fall back often on standardized testing because it is quick, it is easy, and in many, many cases, it's actually mandated, because we have to have comparison data across districts. So we need to give the same exam in, in different places and at different times. But whenever possible, I'm a strong proponent that we use multiple measures of assessment. And that means that we offer students to excel in the areas that they excel in naturally, whether it be through giving a speech or writing a paper, whether it be through project-based learning or group activities. So whatever means we can use to assess, to really level the playing field, I think we should. We all know that in many, many cases, standardized testing does not work for many, many students. So we need to, to work hard to, to incorporate other types of assessment.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill?
Thank you. There's actually two questions I want to combine into one. One involves the use of technology in the classroom. That's kind of been my area of expertise. I purchased a computer lab for the boys' club just to teach them technology for, for educational purposes. I think we need to make sure we're following a very careful rope, that we're not straying too far from the basics. Yes, technology can be a very powerful tool in education, but I'm very disappointed when, when our school board is pulling back on programs such as reading, the changes they made with the TAG program, things like that. When I hear the, the school making announcements, I just received an email today promoting that they got to 60% proficiency in the school in reading, as an achievement, I don't see that as an achievement, I see that as a failure. I definitely approached that problem, and I started going, when I started seeing these results with students pulling back on reading, I went to the schools, and I went to the teachers, and I went out and I purchased books for these teachers that give to their kids. Over 1,000 books every year I give to these teachers, so their kids can take that home and learn to read. I really am disappointed in the board, and I really think we need to be careful with how we're pursuing our curriculum and making the right decisions and sticking with the basics.
Thank you. This concludes the panelist segment of our forum, and I would like that you join me in thanking our Mayor's Youth Commission member, our League of Women Voters member, and our Greater Sioux City Press Club member in being our panelists. We will now have an approximately a 10-minute break, and the audience members are asked to write questions on the note cards that were provided, and submit them at this time to members of the League of Women Voters, the Mayor's Youth Commission, and the Young Ambassadors. We will reconvene- We will reconvene at approximately 8:00, and we'll ask as many of those questions submitted by the audience as possible. That portion of the forum will last approximately 30 minutes, and then if time allows, the candidates may be asked to pose another question to another candidate or answer a question that they did not receive. Thank you.
Okay. We got it. I gotta be timid. Just let you over here.[624.91]
Hello, hello?
I've got, well, I'll take a little bit more. Yeah, because I'm gonna...
Gotta get my mic for my camera.
You gotta get your gavel back.
Well, mine's not on.
Oh, okay.
Mine's not on.
I'll get you right now.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, all right. Okay, our break is now over and we've gathered all the questions, hopefully we have, from everybody. And I do have a lot of questions here, so I'm pretty sure we will not be able to get to everybody's question, but we will try to do as wide a variety as possible to try to cover all subjects. I would like to ask all of the candidates to make sure you're speaking into your microphone, because during the break, we got some comments that people cannot hear what you're saying. So make sure you're speaking into your microphone. And also, we ask again to make sure your cellphones are off. And then we'll start with this answer question period, and we'll probably go about 30 minutes, and then we'll give the candidates each an opportunity, like we did at the end of the other one, to answer a question or speak to a question that they didn't get, and then they'll have a 90-second summation. We'll again have all of the answers be for 60 seconds for the timer thing. So we'll start with, okay, here we go. Mr. Greenwell, you'll get the first question.
Bucky Dog.
And some of these questions were written specifically for a candidate, and some are more generalized for any candidate. Okay, Mr. Greenwell, you've spoken publicly about decreasing classroom sizes while at the same time criticizing the smaller class sizes at the Career Academy. What is your actual position and what would you plan to, to, I'm not sure what that word is, to the district class sizes?
Okay, I have spoken publicly about class sizes, and the reason I did the work on it is because teachers asked me to. They asked me to say, hey, these class sizes are too small down at the Career Academy. And the data that I'm talking about is data that was last spring. And the average class size, on the information that I got, was directly from the district. Eighty percent of our classes had 12 students down at the Career Academy. I'm talking downtown, not talking out the high school, I'm talking about downtown. So we can't afford 12 students in a class size, the district can't. We don't have a kindergarten class under 20. And I don't think that money's coming from the elementary, middle, and high school and being funneled downtown, thereby increasing the class sizes at the high school beyond what's reasonable. I don't think that's sustainable long-term. I fully support a Career Academy, fully support vocational technical training. We need to continue it, but we have to manage it in a different fashion. We can't afford it with a class size average of 12. It may be different than that now, but that's what it was, and we have to continue monitoring it. I want class sizes publicly available.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, this question is along the same lines. Do you think it's okay to take funds from elementary, middle, and high schools to fund the Career Academy?
Well, you know, I don't think that that's exactly how it's all happening, but I will tell you this, the Career Academy is funded through CTE as well as Perkins Funds, and our elementaries are funded through a different stream. And to be honest with you, the question of classroom size, it's one of concern, but we also have to remember that if we're going to talk about classroom sizes, there's an actual cost associated with that. And again, I keep falling back on the same thing. Yes, we need to advocate for more funding. We can't expect to cover the sun with war palm and just keep wishing. We have to get the funding from our legislators to actually be able to impact the classrooms and provide relief to the teachers. And at the same time, we have the responsibility to our students, especially those older students who are actually at the table with us deciding what career path we actually set, and actually being part of that decision-making process. So again, it is a give and take, but at the same time, we have to make sure that our students at the middle school and at the elementary schools are getting what they need, as well as the older students are getting what they need. And as far as I'm concerned, the only way that we're going to get better is to continue to advocate to the legislature and making sure that they understand that we need the funding. Ten years of starving the schools is not going to get us there.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Scarlett, how do you feel about the ratio of students to counselors?
The ratio to students to counselors, I believe there are way too many students per counselor. The counselors, again, here we look at overworked. The counselors are not being able to reach out like they would like to with the students, making sure students are on track with their classes, making sure they're on track to graduate, making sure that they are successful. So the ratio needs to be better, more in line, and the only way to do that is continue to advocate for more counselors in our public school system.
Thank you. Ms. Alberts, do you think you would have a conflict of interest due to your leadership position at Whit Community College, and would you have issues being able to fulfill your duties?
Thanks for asking that question. You know, there's not too many businesses in Sioux City that don't have some interaction, I imagine, with the district, from food service to construction businesses, to businesses that sell floor cleaning products. I think we all, many, many of us, have partnerships with the district, and by serving on the board, that would certainly not impact my relationship with the district or the college in any way. I think, again, it would be hard, it would be hard pressed to find someone who does not have some sort of a relationship with the district. Do I believe that that's going to impact my role in a negative way? Not at all. And anytime that we would have a vote that would, that would impact in any way Western Iowechek or if Western Iowechek would potentially benefit from a vote, I would abstain from that. Rather, I see this as a really quite an opportunity for the two to work together.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill, the district reported a 2% pay increase in teacher salaries for this school year. That is an unrealistic representation. With double-digit insurance increases, many teachers are actually taking home less pay. What will you do to change this?
Well, as I've mentioned several times tonight, I think teachers are our most valuable asset. We need to make sure we're paying them competitively across our district with other districts of similar size within a similar region of us. If we're not attracting the best talent, attracting the best teachers, we're going to definitely struggle with, again, achieving our primary goal, making sure that our students are successful. So I think that anytime we go into any bargaining session with any teacher, we need to go into that analyzing, okay, what is going to be the best impact to make sure that we're competitive, we're keeping our teachers, retaining our teachers, keeping them happy, keeping them wanting to be teachers in our district. But at the same time, we don't want to give away the farm as well. We want to make sure we're fiscally responsible enough to be competitive, but not so overly competitive that we're stretching ourselves too thin. So I think it's a very difficult line to balance, but I definitely feel that we need to make sure we take care of our teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin, do you have children in the district, and would your family members who work for the district influence your decisions?
No, and no. Me and my wife, we currently do not have any children. It's certainly in the plan, and we plan to send them to our school district. My family members would not influence my decision more than any other teacher would influence my decision. I am up here because I want to help do my part in creating the most competitive school district that we can possibly get. I do not want to hear kids, my friends that I went to high school with, I don't want to hear them say they want to leave Sioux City. That's an issue that starts right here with us. Let's create good citizens, let's create, let's create people who are ready for college and the workforce day one after school. And most importantly, let's get them to stay here. I think that all starts right here. So, no, they would not influence my decision.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell, what are the three most important issues you believe need attention right away? And you have 60 seconds.
Boy, wow, that's not adequate. Transparency and accountability, that's been one that's been on my top list. And it's not just something that popped up because I'm running for school board. This has been something I've been hitting for years. You heard earlier, I spent my own money trying to get information from the district and make it a public, available to the public. I want to learn about the district. Every single month, I get the monthly financials on the district. I go through them. I can see the funds flowing from the elementary, middle, and high schools. I get it every month. I think class sizes are clearly an issue that I've spoken about publicly. I think you've heard my position on that. We need to make that available to the public, not a secret. And the other one is training for new programs for teachers. We implemented international baccalaureate, middle school reading, tag clustering, and standard-based grading without providing adequate training, and you know what a mess we've had on that. So I think those are, those are my three priorities.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, how does your volunteer experience within the school district color your decision-making for board decisions?
Actually, I think it helps me a great deal, being able to know what it's like to be in the classroom from volunteering and helping my, my kids' classmates through the district, being able to go into the different schools and observe what's happening, and being able to chat and talk with others that are on the ground, boots on the ground. I also believe that through, through the need of understanding what we need to do as parents, as, as a member of a parent group who raises monies to support our, our school, and through the foundation, I think it's really important that you get that perspective, because it does drive how I make a decision. It does drive how I question policy, and it does drive how I then proceed to provide goals and priorities for our superintendent.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett, what is your position on the dismantling of the reading recovery program in the elementaries? Please speak to what kind of research-based effective programming that will replace it.
I'm going to do more research in that area, but I am an advocate. We need to improve our reading scores and find out what is going on regarding that, and do the necessary research to implement something that will be positive and successful for our public school system.
Ms. Albert, what would you propose to do to draw more students to our district versus losing students to other districts?
I think we really need to begin by telling our story a little more than we currently do. We have fabulous things going on in our classrooms, we have fabulous teachers, our students are producing, we have the Career Academy, we have a STEM elementary school, an art elementary school, we have a coding school where kindergartners are doing coding. We have lots of amazing things to talk about, and we need to do a better, better job of just telling our story, getting in the newspaper, getting on TV, talking about the positive things, inviting parents, inviting community members to our schools to see what's happening, because we really do have an outstanding district. But we have to let other young families in the area know what it means to be able to go to one of the Sioux City schools and the advantages that they're going to have.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill, do you think the arts, including music, is as, is as necessary, particularly for some students, as advanced science and mathematics?
I absolutely do. I think that it's very important that students have a wide breadth of experience while they're in school. I'll pull a quote from a television personality, Adam Savage, he was on Mythbusters, and he said that once we started pulling out music and arts from the school districts and from teaching that, then, then student performance started to decline. When students have that kind of idea set and that kind of learning set, it really does expand their minds. I, I worked on my doctorate in educational psychology, and my primary focus was how do people learn? How do they, how do they understand these tasks? And it's, and it's amazing when you, when you relay this extra information of even, how, how does music play out? How do you draw? How do, how do you conceive something? How, how much that has an impact on a child to really open the horizons and really make them think when they go into other classes? I did personal studies on it as well, and I saw reading scores that actually went up 12% over the standard scores just from adding in music and art education.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin, there are class sizes of 35 to 40 students. Are you comfortable with this?
No. Studies have shown, classroom size became a, a sort of a hot topic during, during the 1990s. Bill Clinton's Department of Ed is really what started this discussion. Teachers are overworked, students cannot obtain the one-on-one skill set that they need, especially younger ages. But I also understand, I also understand why we have these numbers, budget constraints. We have to be realistic about this. As, as a school board member, I will try every possible way that we can conceive to lower that number. Class sizes are a real factor that really negate learning. It hurts a learning environment. Let's, let's, let's put our teachers in, in a position where they can give every one of their students the chance to learn, and that's something that needs to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell, you've been very critical of our school district at board meetings. What positive contributions will you make if you are elected?
I think, I think the area where the school has done well has been on the capital projects point of view, building the new schools. We haven't seen cost overruns or massive delays, so I think the school has done a good job with that. I told you about, I think our budgeting needs to improve significantly. I think that does, our, our students that are coming inbound, we have 542 students that are opting out, we have 164 students that are opting in. It costs us about $3.4 million of state aid. We need to figure out how to do it. But before we can figure out how to do it, we need to understand the numbers. Yes, I've been critical on financial matters. We can do much, much better. We need to lower our administrative costs, we need to focus on class sizes. I'm about transparency and accountability. We need to be accountable. I was at a board meeting last night where they're trying to remove a policy that provided student achievement information available to the public. They weren't going to do it. They tried to remove it. That's something I believe is wrong, and we need to make all information available to the public.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, this is from a teacher. I've been a teacher for several years in the district. Today, classrooms are as hot today as ever. How is it cost-effective to be, to keep shutting them on and off?
Well, that's the first time I've heard of that, because I can tell you that my daughter takes a sweater to, to school because her room sometimes can be quite cool in, in the summer. But you know what? We do have a big, robust energy program that we go, have people on staff that actually go out and look at that. I am pretty sure that there is a building management person that you can actually take that concern to, and then we can evaluate it. Just like any building, there's going to be hot spots and cold spots. That is just the nature of any building. But again, there is, there's a staff member in your building that is the, the person in charge of the, the facility that can actually mitigate that problem for you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett, do you feel if middle school conferences allowed families to meet with all of their teachers, that more teacher-family relationships could be built, and maybe that might have a positive influence on students' mental health by allowing both parties to see that students on an academic level and also on a personal level?
Okay, I will answer that holistically. I do believe that if parent-teacher conferences are available for parents that work during the day or B-shift, sometimes C-shift, if they are engaged in those parent-teacher conferences, it will get that student to be a better student, more involved, hands-on, and familiarize the parent more with the processes, policies of the school district. So many times, there's that disconnect, parents are not aware of what's going on with their student. And so having those parent-teacher conferences available for parents and understanding that some parents do work two and three jobs is crucial. We have to find a way to make sure parent or guardian is hands-on or in attendance, or find a way to make that available.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind everybody to make sure you're speaking into your mic. Ms. Albert, how would you increase teacher morale and retention beyond salary and benefits? We are losing good teachers to surrounding, lower-paying districts, so salary and benefits are not the magic key.
I was asked this question the other night, in fact, and the example I gave then was, I don't know if you're familiar with Simon Sinek's work or not, but he always says we need to start with the why. So before throwing out fixes, we need to find out why. Why are they leaving? You just said it's not because of salaries, it's not because of benefits. What is the reason behind? I think before we can, again, before we can throw out solutions, we, we've got to ask the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill, what are your thoughts on outsourcing, for example, counselors, food service, nurses, et cetera?
I think that we really need to focus on what's important for students. For any outsourcing needs, an example, if it's something that directly relates to student, example, counseling or, or teaching, or, or any of the primary functions of making sure that student is successful, we should absolutely not outsource it. We have some of the best resources in the state working here in Sioux City, so we absolutely should not outsource those. When we're looking at other types of services, it, it really comes to be a question if, if it's something that can be adequately provided through an outsourced company or whether it needs to be done in-house. If there's cost savings involved that doesn't have any impact on, on morale, that doesn't have any impact on, on student performance, that doesn't have any impact on, on long-term budget needs, I, I would be open to, to investigate those, but it would have to be a very hard case to make sure that, that all those things are in place, and it, again, has absolutely no impact on, on, again, morale, on, on students, on, on anything. Students are our number-one priority. We need to do everything we can to make sure they're successful.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin, are you aware of the expense of the international baccalaureate program, and do you consider it as sustainable when we are allowed only 1% growth funding?
Yes and no. I think it's something that really falls in line with a lot of what we are, what we are trying to, to do. Realistically, it sounds good. Realistically, put in place as, as we have, as we have spoken about here tonight, making sure teachers are prepared to, to do it. But on the other side of that, budget constraints come into effect. I, I sat up here an hour, an hour ago and said maximum spending of an authority doesn't work. This is one of those keys, especially when SSA has not kept up with simple inflation costs the last 10 years. That handcuffs our school district more than any other district across the state, because we are the most property-poor school district. We have to do what we have to do. So, yes, that is not a sustainable program at 1% growth, but I would also argue that no program is, is absolutely unsustainable at 1% growth. It just won't work, so.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell, discuss your experience in selecting or supervising the selection of curriculum and achieving student success. If no experience, to whom would you turn for assistance in selecting curriculum?
I can honestly say I, I select curriculum with my kids when we start signing up for classes each year, but beyond that, I, I don't select the curriculum that the school district puts forward. I historically haven't had any issues with the curriculum. How we, how we employ new programs, yes, I have, but I think we offer a broad curriculum for the district. I think it's fairly comprehensive. I, I don't see any, any deficit in our core curriculum of what we're offering. The question is, is it sustainable in certain areas? And that's what we have to come back to. Is it really sustainable? But I have no, no issues with the curriculum, and I would lean towards the, look, it's got to be towards the teachers and what the teachers are, are focusing on. They know the curriculum best, and then we have to look at what we need to be teaching our kids for the future, and what are, what are new, new things we need to add. But I would, I would go back to the teachers if I had questions, and I often do, quite frankly, before we sign our kids up for classes. I go and ask, hey, what's this class about? A composition class or whatever, so, so I do that in that manner.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, how do you explain losing approximately $4 million a year because Sioux City school students choose to voluntary transfer out of the district?
That's not a number I've heard recently, but, okay, the, the name of the game is funding, but it also is enrollment. Enrollment is important. If we're going to continue to grow our district, we need to have enrollment be something that's focused on the board. At $6,000-plus for cost per pupil, it is important that we maintain our current enrollment, but also evaluate differences or changes on what's causing students to leave the district. That's very important. We are, we are surrounded by different, and different school districts as well, where students have choice to move and go where they need to. So we need to maintain ourselves as competitive. Somebody earlier mentioned our specialty in theme schools. Those are things that draw people in. Our Sioux City Career Academy, it's also something that draws people in. So as we, we talk about the things that we would, that, that we want to make sustainable, we have to make the things that we provide as services to our students sustainable so that we can maintain our enrollment. we can maintain our enrollment and continue to grow it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett. Should school curriculum be finalized before school starts and not be in the process of writing or adopting a new curriculum once school has started?
It should be done in the beginning. We have to know what we're doing before we start running the race. So I would hope we would have a sound plan, game plan, and ready to execute by the time that the school year begins. So that should be done before.
Thank you. Ms. Albert. What experience do you have to prevent dropout among high schoolers?
Among high schoolers? Well, I've been involved in a, in a program at Western Iowa Tech that's called Gateway to College, where we've been able to help some of the districts in the area that can't afford to have an alternative school. We provide classroom instruction. I believe the teacher for that program is right back here, sitting here, Tito Parker, and he provides instruction through a software program and through the state of Iowa. And we're able to help students, again, in the smaller districts that can't afford to have their own alternative program. I started that program a few years ago, very proud of it. We have 100% graduation rate.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill. Why are there plans to have a sophomore house at the high school? What need is it designed to address?
I have no idea what that question's talking about.
Oh, okay, I don't either. Okay, we'll go to a different question then. What is of the greatest concerns? New schools, class size, or student discipline?
Sam, can you read that back? Sorry, one more time?
Okay, what is of the greatest concern? New schools, class size, or student discipline?
Well, I think student discipline and class sizes can be held hand-in-hand. When you have a really large class size, you don't have that individual attention with your teachers. So it's very difficult to maintain strict student discipline within a school when, when there's such a high ratio of students per teacher. I think it's very important that we find a way to equalize that, so that way, A, we can get class sizes to an acceptable ratio, B, get our teachers to be able to get that student discipline in. Far too often, like, like I've mentioned many times before, our teachers really are hamstrung by a variety of things. Whether it's teaching towards metrics, whether it's teaching large classroom sizes. So we really need to do whatever we can to empower our teachers, so that way, A, we're reducing classroom size to an acceptable level, and B, we're giving the tools so they can provide a solid foundation for these students to have good discipline.
Thank you. And Mr. Goodwin. How do classroom teachers administer, address discipline issues, foul language, disrespect, bullying, and attendance problems?
So something I have heard personally from several teachers is they're at a point now where they don't know how to address it. They don't necessarily know what their principals want, they don't necessarily know what the administration wants. I guess I'm kind of old, guess I'm kind of old-school in the sense that I think a teacher should be in charge of their classroom, within reason of, of course. But a teacher should have ultimate say in what happens within their, within their room. And that's something, over the past six months, when I've been talking to teachers, that's something that I hear is not necessarily, not necessarily taking place right now. And I would work hard in sort of bringing that power back into the individual classroom and kind of in, and sort of empower teachers to make those decisions and not be afraid to follow through with whatever decision they ultimately make.
Thank you. Now we're going to go to the part where each candidate can answer a question that was addressed, posed to somebody else, if they'd like to. And we'll start with Ms. Nelson then on that. And I'd like to remind you again to make sure you're speaking into your microphone. And 60 seconds.
60 seconds. Trying to look at all the notes I took here. Behaviors in the classroom. I think we need to recognize that children are changing, and we can, we can blame it on classroom size, we can blame it on today's environment. But the reality is, we need to provide teachers with adequate training. Our district is working with the AEA to provide means for teachers to provide mental health first aid. We are lobbying to the legislature to provide actual adequate funding for children's mental health and not just this, what they passed last, last year, which was just a, take some money from, from one mental health program to give to the other. It's not a one-solution-fix problem. What we can do is advocate for prevention within ourselves, within our district, and then provide resources to our teachers as soon as they become available, and we can provide those to them.
Thank you. Ms. Scarlett?
Yes, again, when you talk about student success, I am adamant about student success. And I think that as far as transitioning, when they come out of high school to graduate, we need to retain our young people by building partnerships with our local businesses. We have to tap into that. We have to offer internships and hiring the students right here in Sioux City to stay and build community in Sioux City.
Thank you. Ms. Albert?
So when I've been asked about what to do for budget cuts, or how to move money from one place to the next, I've talked a lot about partnering, partnering with business and industry in the community, partnering four-year colleges to help provide some of the things that we don't necessarily have the money to do. I think a really good example of this, and this addresses the question about how we feel about the ratio of guidance counselors to students, yes, that ratio is, is out of balance. But at the Career Academy, there are multiple colleges, they're sending representatives to sit there and meet with the students and help to, prepare them to help to, know where they're going to transfer to, to the four-year college or the two-year college, to help them with a pathway. I know Western Iowa Tech, we focus on the pathways that they start there in the, at the high school, at the, at the center, and transfer on to Western Iowa Tech. So we provide staffing, multiple colleges provide staffing, and I think that's a great way to show how partnerships work sometimes when we don't have all the resources we need. Those, okay, I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Broihill?
I'll quickly touch on two different areas. The first one had to do with student discipline matters, as Mr. Goodwin was talking about. I think the biggest issue we have right now is, is not holding parents and students accountable. And as a district, we're really struggling to, to provide parents the tools to allow them to be accountable. I remember when I was a child, my parents used to be able to go to evening classroom, whether it be a school function, you know, choir event, what have you, they, there was more evening parent-teacher conferences. Now, unless you're one of the lucky four or five people, if you work the day shift, you're not going to be able to get into that. There's definitely a disconnect in how we can get parents back into that. The second thing, talk about being critical of the school board, I think it's absolutely important that we need to be critical in every single decision that the school board makes. That doesn't necessarily mean positive, that doesn't necessarily mean negative, but we need to analyze every single thing they do. Biggest struggle I've had in the last couple of years is I haven't really seen a very clear lack, a point of direction with our school board. I think our administrators are picking up a lot of the slack, and they seem to be taking charge for us on that. I definitely think we need to get back on track, get leadership in on the school board to really point us in the right direction.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
So something that I've heard a couple of times tonight is actually the reason why I, I actually chose to run. We are losing teachers, we are losing students. That shouldn't be happening. We are the largest school district. We are able, due to our size and due to the community we're in, we are able to offer things that surrounding school districts can't. Career, on Career Academy, WIT part, on partnerships. Let's use these to our advantage to keep kids in Sioux City. Let's keep them in our school district, let's let them finish in our school district. Teachers, compensation and benefits are certainly not the whole story, absolutely not. Let's focus on empowering teachers to teach their, their students. Let's allow our teachers to create good citizens. Let's allow our, our educators to do what they do best and do what they chose to do, and that's teach our children. We have the best teachers. There is not a school district that has better teachers than us. Let's keep them, let's, let's actually attract new ones, and let's be realistic about how we can get it done.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell?
I'd like to propose a solution to better understanding what's going on with teacher morale. And let me, let me phrase it briefly. Classroom complexity. Classroom complexity is a major issue right now in all of our classes. And what I mean by that is, put yourself in a teacher shoe. Imagine you're a teacher right now, and you have 32 students. Imagine your neighbor next to you is a teacher and has 32 students. If your neighbor has two ELL students, three IEP students, two special ed students, and two with discipline records, imagine how much more complex your neighbor's class would be than yours. We need to measure this, we need to understand it, and then do a correlation with why teachers are leaving, and seeing if those teachers that have very complex classes and extremely high workload, if that's the big reason. I think we need to measure this, we need to make it public, and we need to start correlating that. There's a teacher morale issue out there, there really is right now. This is a big piece of it, and fear of retribution is a very big piece of it.
Okay, thank you.
I had a call tonight before this meeting, and that was a big issue.
Thank you. Now it's time for the closing statements, and each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for the closing, and we'll start with Ms. Scarlett.
Thank you so much. In closing, I want to thank you all for your time this evening. You could have been doing something else, but you came out here to listen to us, and we have been listening to the community. Again, our most precious commodity is our children. On July 16th, 2018, I stood before the board for appointment. But today, I stand before you, the people, for your vote. The community's voice must be heard. I intend to represent the taxpayer to ensure the most efficient, responsible use of your provided resources. Because of the passion I have, I am committed to ensure the quality of our public school system that builds strong, healthy, financially viable district. I appreciate, and I ask for your vote on November 5th. Your vote is your voice. Vote Mo, Monique Scarlett, for school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Albert?
Well, the question came up earlier about the experience with curriculum, and I have to mention that several years ago, I was one of six, six faculty who were hired to open a tribal college on the Winnebago Reservation in July, and we opened in, in August. I was one of six who prepared the curriculum for the entire school within about six-week session. So I've had a little experience in building curriculum. I've had experience being in the trenches, in the classroom, and being administrator for 27 years. I don't think that it's vital that every person on the school board is an educator. I think we need to bring a balance. But I do think it's very important that we, that we have at least one person who has a background and the knowledge, and so I ask that you vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Broihill?
Yes, thanks, everybody, for coming out as well. It's very important to us candidates that we, we have the opportunity to present you our, our points of view. I think that's, that's great. You heard a lot of talks about a lot of different areas here, a lot of stuff about raising enrollment rates, raising funding due to enrollment rates. We're losing money because of that. But we're losing focus of the primary goal of our education system. That is to make sure our students are successful, to do everything we can to make sure that they are accomplished when they grow up, so they have a sound quality of life. If we can accomplish that task, if we can get them so that they're happy, we can get to our teachers, make sure they're happy, that's going to fix our problems with our enrollment, because a happy student and a happy teacher aren't going to leave our district. So we need to start focusing on the teachers and on the students to make sure that that drives up, and stop worrying about the metrics so much and looking at, well, we lost 20 students this year. You're going to lose students. That's part of the game. As long as every student that's in our district is successful, that's what important. I devoted my last 20 years of my life, almost my entire adult life, to making sure that I provide everything I can as a resource to our students. I went down to the boys' club, I bought them computers, I teach them, I go to the classroom and I say, hey, what, what can I do to help? It's been such a passion of mine, and I definitely, like I said, at the end of the day, when I meet my maker in, hopefully, 100 years from now, but unfortunately, it won't make that long, I want to be able to say that I made a difference. Even if it's just on one child's life, if that child had an improvement because of something I did, that's going to make me happy. And fortunately, hopefully, with the school board, I can say it for a lot more than just one child.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin?
Yeah, so I will echo what has already been said. Thank you all for actually coming out tonight. Not, not only do we need to share what we know, but we need to hear what you know. We need to hear what is happening in, in actually your day-to-day life, and that's why things like this are absolutely crucial. Just to really, on simply some, on some things up here. I am not a teacher. I have no experience in a classroom, aside from the hours and years that I legally had to be in one. But what I do know is I do know how we can make our town better. Growing up in Sioux City, like I said before, everyone that I went to school with wanted to get out. Most of them are back. They kind of took for, they absolutely took for, they absolutely took for granted what we do here in Sioux, Sioux City. It starts here. It starts in our public schools. Let's make sure they are competitive. Let's make sure they are attracting and retaining quality educators, administrators, and students. Without that, nothing can function. Let's make sure that we are doing everything that we can up here to make sure that happens. And I'm not going to sit up here and say I absolutely know what that is, but when each one comes across, you can be assured that will be my main focus.
Thank you. Mr. Greenwell?
I started out the evening talking about a culture of openness. That's what I want to bring to the board. Open, transparent, and fully accountable to the citizens, be it in student achievement, operational metrics, class sizes, and the financials, and our budgeting process. We need to improve those. I want to have a positive improvement in these activities. Our tax dollars are short. We spend roughly $225 million a year. I'm a CPA, former CPA, don't practice currently. We need somebody looking at it at a detail level that truly understands what's going on with the funds flow. It's so critical. I don't want to sit up here and be a bean counter, but I want accountability for what we're doing, and understanding what we're doing with our taxpayer dollars. It's so critical, because you know they're going to be fewer and fewer on a go-forward basis. You know that. I know that. As I said, I'm a passionate, passionate supporter of public education. I have children in the district, I have children who've graduated in the district. My wife and I participate very heavily in school activities. I actually pull the band trailer. So, so I know what it's like to be on the front line. I see the kids, I work with the kids, and we're active participants. And I do appreciate your time tonight, and I would ask your support. I'm not the guy who comes in just when it's election time. I've been around for years pushing these topics and asking for this. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson?
Well, thank you for your time, and I also want to acknowledge that there's two board, past board members and, and the audience. And I want to thank you because every time that you drive by a brand-new school where the kids are excited about their new gyms and their new libraries, you are seeing the vision and the guidance and the direction of the board. When, thank you also for the acknowledgement that last night I did prevent the communications policy from actually being deleted. What I, what I bring to the board is a new perspective, a new perspective that has created change through stimulating questions, conversation, and resulting in a lot more discussion at the board table. My vision continues to drive and redefine our goals and priorities that for not only our district, but for the superintendent running it. And I will continue to influence the direction of the board by sitting setting clear expectations for us to continue to move our students, close the achievement gap, and move Sioux City and its students forward. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sioux City, Greater Sioux City Press Club, Mayor's Youth Commission, and Young Ambassadors, I want to thank our audience for attending tonight's forum. We appreciate our Mayor's Youth Commission panelists' participa, participation and preparation, and that of the Mayor's Youth Commission and Young Ambassadors timers and greeters. We also wish to thank the city for working with us to arrange for cable, TV, and YouTube coverage of this event. Above all, we wish to thank our candidates for their cooperation and commitment to public service. Please give them a round of applause.[1564.83][1564.83](applause) I would like to remind you that the Sioux City Community School Board and the Western Iowa Tech Community College School Board, as well as the city council and mayor elections, will take place on Tuesday, November 5th, with precincts open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. A listing of your precinct is available from the county commissioner of elections at the Woodbury County website, or at the Woodbury County Courthouse Room 103. There are two other methods to cast your ballot. You may fill out an absentee ballot request form, which we have available at the entry area, and mail it by October 25th to the Woodbury County Commissioner of Elections, who then will send you a ballot to complete and returned by mail, and it will need to be postmarked by November 4th. Or you may opt to vote early by casting an absentee ballot in person at the auditor's office in the Woodbury County Courthouse Room 103 during regular business hours. If you have questions, call Woodbury County Commissioner of Elections, Pat Gill, at 279-6465. Anyone who is 17 years of age may register to vote, and they would be able to vote in the first election after they turn 18. And we have voter registration forms at our information table at the entrance. And you may also register to vote at your precinct on election day, provided you bring acceptable ID, which is a driver's license or photo ID that is current ballot and contains an expiration date and has your current address. And next Thursday night, October 24th, the League of Women Voters of Sioux City will host a general election, city council, and mayor candidates forum in this same location at 7:00. And should you wish to learn about the League of Women Voters membership, and we're not for women only, and our focus on nonpartisanship and voter member education on issues facing our nation, state, and city, please stop at our table as you leave to pick up a membership information form, or mail us at Post Office Box 5091 Sioux City, 51101. And do remember to follow us on our Facebook site, League of Women Voters of Sioux City, and join us in 2020 to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters founding and the passage of the 19th Amendment granting women the right to vote. And thank you again for your participation this evening, and remember to vote in this and in every election. Your vote is a precious gift. Use it wisely on Tuesday, November 5th. And this concludes our candidates forum.[1736.51][1736.51](applause)